All right, every, it looks like we have the, all the trustees here. And the time is now seven thirty, so I will call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. And just before we take the roll call, I just want to announce that in accordance with Public, Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, this meeting is, this meeting is being held in person and by remote attendance and all votes will be taken by roll call. So Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Here.
Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia. Trustee Stapleton.
Here.
President Graber.
Here, thank you very much. And I would now like to take the opportunity to welcome our visitors to the meeting. We appreciate your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four. Approval of last month's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
All right, we are eighty-three percent of the way through the year. And as you can see, we have collected nearly ninety-nine percent of our revenue already. So that is fantastic news. We are very close on our overall property taxes. And we have received more in the personal property replacement tax than we had expected. So that's fantastic. We are at seventy-seven point eight percent of our expenditures for the year. So we are running a little bit under budget. You will notice that the maintenance supplies and other equipment repair and maintenance lines continue to be much higher than expected, and that is due to the purchase of equipment and PPE for COVID. So on the invoices of note, I just want to point out that there is the RW RGW consulting, the down payment check is listed here. We have that as a paper check to be released if this item is approved on tonight's agenda. And if not, that check will be voided.
Thank you, Julie. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding the financial matters as presented? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
I'll move to approve the financial matters as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We are now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Anyone in the public would like to make any comments on agenda items? And Caitlin, did we have any submissions online before the meeting?
We did not.
Okay, thanks. I think that was Jen.
Yes.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, public comment on any other library business?
None.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to the stars of the show today. Agenda item eight A. Jason and Dan will be presenting on the flat roof replacement project released to bid. And Julie, did you want to add any just introductory remarks? Or just kind of, yeah, go ahead.
No, I think we're good. I did bring our show and tell items. So if we want to talk about the different layers and how this actually works, I have this to show to the, to the group. So we'll let Dan take it away and tell us about the project and what we're proposing.
That's great. So this evening, what I want to do is kind of catch everybody up to where we're at today. And then go over a quick schedule with Jason and kind of where the project should end up in spring. So in the last month or month and a half, Jason, myself, Ian and Alex from my office have been doing a lot of research, actually, and trying to figure out the best way to get the project for the roof kind of completed in a way that would kind of have the least amount of unnecessary impact, I'll say, on the library. We're not trying to do the project in a way that isn't responsible. We're trying to actually do it in the most responsible way. Figuring out how to leave the most of the metal roof intact. While creating a roof that will give you a thirty-year warranty, which is, I think, in the best interest of the library. So the issue that we've run into, and it's sort of outlined in the memorandum, is that there's a very low clearances at places between the metal roof, the rooftop units and the existing membrane. In order to put on a new roof, bring the roof up to code, we'd have to add about four inches of rigid insulation. And anytime you guys have driven down the street or seen a construction project, you've seen like the pink thick board or the blue thick board on site, that's rigid insulation. And we need about six inches of that total. There's an R five per inch about for rigid insulation, so you need about six inches total to cover the entire roof. And then you need rigid insulation above that to make for slopes to get you to the, to the, um, the roof drains. So in part of the roof, the structure actually slopes and that, in that instances, we only need the six inches. And then part of the roof, we need, the roof structure is flat. And we need to take insulation and build it up, so we have a slope that gets the water off the roof and stops pounding. And all of that is code required. So once we start to tear off the roof, more than twenty percent of the roof, we actually have to bring the entire roof up to the code, which is again, that's six inches minimum of rigid insulation. And what that does, it gets us into doors sill problems. It gets us into having to raise up the rooftop units. It gets us into issues of the existing metal roof, which we're trying not to disturb as much as possible, so that it keeps its water tightness and it keeps its integrity also. And at the same time, the gutters that we've outlined on the existing roof, which is more or less along the south and north edges of the building, where the metal roof comes down and drains into sort of a membrane two-foot gutter and then goes to the roof drains, those need to be replaced in entirety. So long and short of it, we kind of spent a lot of time meeting with consultants, a roof consultant, a consultant looking at if any of the insulation on the existing building is damaged by water. We did cores on the roof to try to figure out exactly how much we would have to add. And the best solution that we've come up with, and actually, I think is the best solution regardless, is to apply a liquid applied roofing membrane on top of the existing membrane that's on the roof now. The membrane, and that's what Julie is holding up. So we've met with Tremco's both together and separately between SMC and our office. And I think the, the thing that makes me the most happy with this solution is A, it does allow us to keep the integrity of the existing roof in terms of heights and the metal roof. And B, you end up with a really thick roof that is, it's actually going to be incredibly endurance, endurable. And you will have a thirty-year warranty on it. So it's slight, this is a little bit dorky or technical, but the best roof you can possibly do is multiple, multiple layers of tar paper and tar. And it's just incredibly gross and it has horrible smells. And people don't use it anymore exactly for that reason, but it's when you have multiple layers of a roof, it really helps so that if there is a puncture, if something does happen on the roof, it doesn't get through it right away. So with this application, you actually end up with a roof that's about a hundred and forty mils thick. The thickest, highest performance roof that I've ever done in my career is about ninety mils. And we rarely get to do those because of cost. Usually we do a sixty mil roof and a sixty mil is exactly what you have on your roof now. So the existing roof or main, we will replace, remove and replace all of the gutters and the membranes in the gutters. Those are in incredibly bad shape, and I think we'll probably have to replace some of the decking below that, some of the structural decking below that. Will, and then apply a sixty mil membrane down first and then add the same extra layer of eighty mil roofing on top of that. So again, the entire roof will have the hundred and forty mil thickness, which is one layer of base coat of liquid, then they actually put down a sheet which binds it. Thank you very much, Julie, which is the gray. And then they end up putting down the top coat, which is the white. We have spoken with the, such a funny thing to look at. We have spoken with the Village of Downers Grove. I know last time we did the masonry project, there was kind of some issues getting through permit, and we're not entirely sure why. But it was just kind of hard, like they kind of made it hard on you guys, which seems sort of counterproductive. So we've really done our due diligence beyond the project, especially Jason, making sure that the project has been well introduced to the city. And they're, they're expect what's coming. So I was able to have a really good conversation with Mark at the village and make sure that he knows what we're up to. He understands how we're going to meet code. And how we get around having to replace all of an installation, which isn't really getting around it. He was expecting us to this, to do this, actually. So we really have, we, he, I asked him if he wanted to meet in person at the library, and he said there was no need to. That really, what we were doing was what he expected us to do. He had heard through the grapevine and given a little bit of research. And said he, we should just submit for permit. He didn't see any issues. At the same time, we'll be submitting Jason's plan for where they're going to store and how they get materials up on top of the building. I know last time for the the village, I'll say is very picky about public access and public access around construction sites. So Jason has put together a really well documented map that shows where work will occur and which phases it will occur in. And we'll be submitting that to the village early also, just to make sure that we don't have that same issue of back and forth with them. That was kind of more or less a waste of everyone's time last time, including the villages. So we're really happy with where we're at. We're very excited about, I think the end product on the library is going to be probably the best thing that you could have on a building. I'm really impressed by the product. It is not a new product. We're not trying something out in your building that we hope works. This is something that's tried and true. They are using it at hospitals and places that are occupied because it has an extremely low VOC. It is biologically based. It's not an epoxy. So the epoxy is magically based, sorry. But it doesn't have the fumes that you would sometimes associate with a liquid applied membrane that can sometimes be extremely noxious. And that's not this product. And there's, again, in the outline that we put out, there are lots of qualified installers. So that we should be able to get a really good bid pool. Tremco's going to help us write specifications. They'll let the people know that they support, that the project is out to bid. It's a bid, it's a big enough project. We are putting it out at the good time so that it can be done before schoolwork. So we're actually, I feel like we're, we're checking all the boxes to make sure that you guys are getting the most value and the best functioning, performing roof that we could, with all things considered. That's a lot, sorry. Questions, comments? I know roofs aren't as exciting as some of the things we've talked about before, but they are incredibly important. No one ever sees them, but they do a lot of work.
What's like that, what's the expected sort of timeline, assuming we approve it tonight? Like what, what are the next steps and kind of how do you, how do you?
So, so we're looking at getting the documents done. I'm looking down at my screen, sorry. We're looking at the documents done right around the twentieth of December. And then the permit of the project will be put out the bed ready, bid ready at the beginning of January. We're expecting construction to begin in the spring, just about as soon as the frost breaks. That gives us enough time to put the project up to bid. But to do in February, we get shop drawings and or submittals, which isn't a ton, and they should be ready to roll from there. And Jason can speak a little bit more to that if we need to, but we see it starting in spring and probably taking a couple of months. It's about two hundred squares of roof.
Yeah.
Couple of months from start to finish.
Yeah, we're hoping to bid in January and award, you know, you know, have an RTA scope review and have a recommendation right to award at your February board meeting. And then we'll, we'll hit the ground running once we get the sub, sub, the sub on board, stuff like that. We're also doing a few other additional items like proving the access with a couple of flatters, stuff like that, that'll help. That'll help keep people, direct them where they need to be with the, the roof and stuff like that. So right now you gotta climb up a ladder and walk across a standing seam.
It's not safe. Yeah, it's not safe at all, actually.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to try to do some stuff to improve that for, you know, maintenance staff or any, anyone else up there that's got to go up on that roof and check drains or do what they need to do.
I did skip over that, so we are replacing the roof drains. We'll be doing the roof fence. Anything that's kind of superfluous to the roof membrane itself will be replaced also.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
I've got, just to make sure I understand what's going on. I, I learned quite a bit about roofs when I my condo association spent three quarters of a million dollars on a roof. It was a little different project, but if I understand right, the code requires R thirty?
Yes, sir.
And that's too thick. I mean, it, it, it won't fit without major changes on the roof.
That's correct.
Raising, raising the RTU up and stuff like that.
That's correct.
By the way, the RTU is the rooftop unit. It's the giant.
Yeah, thank you.
It's on top of the roof.
It's the giant things you guys just replaced.
Really difficult and expensive to raise up.
It is. We would have to hire a crane for about three thousand dollars a day to do that.
What we're, what you're proposing is, is well, we don't have to bring it up to code if we use what's already there and improve on it and.
Correct. And the insulation that you have there does have some good thicknesses and spots. It's not as, the minimum's at about three and a half. But in some places you're at about ten. So it's not, it's not horribly performing. You know what I mean? We're not worried about condensation coming through the deck. Three inches is about minimum that we would expect before you start to have issues of condensation in our region. So.
We may not end up with quite as much, quite as big an R factor.
That's correct.
But the rain won't come in.
That's absolutely correct.
Putting a, a, a total sealer over what's already there.
Yep.
With three layers, a primer.
It's a liquid layer.
Yeah. It's a primer, base coat, then like a fiberglass layer, and then the actual the top coat.
Now for servicing.
And then they do the rough areas to designate the walkways.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about walkways. Are the walkways, I mean, is it durable enough? You're not going to have somebody walking around and punching holes in it.
Yep, it is.
No, you're, you're basically getting an extra coating and they broadcast some aggregate to distinguish them. So.
Okay, so the walkways are extra durable.
Yes.
Exactly.
And we need, we need to be very cautious about who we let up there, so they don't punch holes.
It's gonna, it's gonna be way more durable than it is right now. To Dan's point, you're, you know, you're, you're over doubling the amount of thickness of the membrane essentially. What we've also done too is we did an infrared scan on the roof. So we've evaluated and, you know, we had a subcontractor out there, look at the roof and, and find the wet areas of insulation, which you had like two percent. So it was, it was, you know, it, it, it just didn't make a lot of sense to replace all that polyisoe. That's in great shape. So.
So are they replacing the two percent or?
We're replacing over the two percent. We'll do, the two percent was mainly confined, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, to the gutters for the most part.
Yep.
And then we're going to, so instead of just doing part of the gutters like Dan, Dan had said, we're going to do the whole thing. Just, you know.
One of the gutters actually has water in it. It actually feels like a water bed up there.
So all the gutters on the flat roof plus, plus the gutters on the sloped roof.
It's more the gut, there aren't any gutters on this. They're the roof drains on the flat roof that we'll be replacing. So those are the circles that they come to. No, that's cool. And then we'll also be doing the insulation around the gutters to make sure, because that's one spot that can get damaged pretty easily. And then the other part is, yes, the gutters around the sloped roof area.
I know enough, just enough to be dangerous, but you've said it, but I'm set up now. I think they've done a very thorough job.
Put me in a condo association, I'll be the opposite. That's good.
What, what's the, so what's the million dollar question here, or the less than million dollar question of how, what are we looking at as far as the expected cost for the project? We brought a, it should be thirty to forty percent less than what we had budgeted. We had a couple vendors on site to give us budget numbers. And it was very optimistic. So I think we had all, and I think we should hopefully be thirty to forty percent.
Well, that was the right answer.
Yes. I gotta be honest too, we initially, when we proposed our fee, we reduced it to, because that we were, when I've been speaking with Jason, we were pretty sure this was going to come in lower. So we, we brought it down also knowing that it wasn't going to be, if we ended up at the higher part, we would have had a different conversation, but there was just so many obstacles in the way, once we really got into the nitty gritty of it. So it's nice that you guys planned for this. It's, it's just going to be in your best benefit. Yeah. That, um, the dollars will still be there. So that's great.
Right. Well, and from my perspective, I mean, we, you know, we've worked with you before, we're, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm very confident in the process that we're working towards.
Good.
To do this.
Thank you.
We had the, you know, we've budgeted, this was in the twenty seventeen capital assessment plan. We've budgeted for this. We've planned for this. The money is there. We're hoping it comes in under budget. So to me, I mean, I, I, I would, I'm obviously open to any other questions or comments on this, but and I think I'm, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of it. So.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
I'm ready to go.
Good. That's been a lot of work upfront. Good job, Jason. It was, uh, did a great job on this. Thank you.
We got, it's always a pleasure to work with you, Dan.
Yeah, I know. It's been well.
Yeah.
We got four more board members here to convince them.
Any other questions or comments before we?
Well, just nice work, Jason and Dan. Thank you.
Yep, for sure. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda item eight A, the flat roof replacement project released to bid?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Great.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a second and then so we have a motion to approve agenda item eight A, the flat roof replacement project released to bid, but has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Approve the agenda item eight A, flat roof replacement project released to bid.
And thank you, Jason and Dan, so much.
You guys enjoy your evening. We'll see you in the springtime.
All right, sounds good.
Awesome. Take care. Have a great evening. Be safe.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
See you.
Okay, we're now on to agenda item eight B. One of my favorite agenda items of the entire year. Resolution twenty twenty dash two, which is a resolution of appreciation for the service of staff members who have celebrated milestone service anniversaries and or retirements in twenty twenty. And what I'll do is I'll read the resolution into the record and then presumably we'll have a motion to approve the resolution after I've completed reading the resolution. Okay. Whereas eight members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated milestone service anniversaries in twenty twenty, totaling ninety years of service as follows. At the five years of service level, Anthony Jones, Kelly Kobayashi, Allison, and Allison Renaud. At the ten year years of service level, Sandra Fayan. At the fifteen years of service level, Suzanne Thomas, Diane Jakus, and Suzie Miller. And at the twenty year service level, Annie Yagelski. And whereas four members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated retirements in twenty twenty, totaling seventy-three years of service as follows. Irene Stradz, twenty-three years of service. Ray Pampasak, nineteen years of service. Maureen Carl, thirteen years of service. And Cheryl Pollack, eighteen years of service. And whereas the committed services of these staff members has contributed significantly to the library's high level of performance and high reputation in the community. And whereas twenty twenty has provided many new opportunities for service, including response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the diversity, equity and inclusion trajectory discovery project. Therefore, be it resolved that the library, Board of Library Trustees recognizes with great appreciation the dedication and perseverance of these staff members and thanks them for their outstanding work. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash two?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash two. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. The resolution number twenty twenty dash two has been unanimously approved this eighteenth day of November twenty twenty by the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Downers Grove. Thank you very much, everyone. We're now on to agenda item eight C. The twenty twenty-one board meeting's schedule.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah. Does anybody have any, I, I think I did notice, and I think that we may have done this, this may be the second year in a row, at least we've done this, where we've made sure it didn't line up. We didn't have it, we didn't have the meeting during, during spring break. Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at that too.
But I think other than that, I mean, does anybody have any questions or comments on the board meeting schedule? Twenty twenty-one?
They all look good to me.
I hope to be traveling extensively in twenty twenty-one and have a system.
Well, if we just keep doing these by Zooms, we'll have no idea. You can just travel and do your thing and.
Sure.
We have a motion to approve agenda item eight C, the twenty twenty-one board meeting schedule.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one board meeting schedule that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item eight C, the twenty twenty-one board meeting schedule has been approved. We're now on to agenda item eight D. The twenty twenty-one holiday closing schedule. Julie, is there anything exciting going on here?
Not really. Same, it's same old, same old. We are, we are, fingers crossed Rotary Grove Fest is on the list.
Yes, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one holiday closing schedule?
I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one holiday closing schedule.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one holiday closing schedule that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dougherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We've approved the twenty twenty-one holiday closing schedule. We're now on to agenda item eight E. Which is the scheduled board meeting for December. I think the thought process is here, we, we didn't have a meeting in December of twenty nineteen, and I think that's one of the reasons we have a full agenda this month. Because we've maybe put a few extra items in here that could have been done in December, but we all may be busy or not busy, you know, in December, but I think the proposal here is, is just to get your thoughts, the board's thoughts on whether or not we're going to have a meeting in December.
I think it's completely fine to not have a meeting in December.
And since Julie is the one who put this on the agenda, I'm assuming it's okay with Julie that we not have a December meeting.
Absolutely. And the date for the December meeting is so early in the month that our financials won't be ready, the credit card bill won't be in, so all of that would. our financials won't be ready, the credit card bill won't be in, so all of that would have had to been done in arrears anyway, so we may as well just push.
Okay. Um, do we have a motion to approve the? Uh, canceling the scheduled board meeting for December?
So moved.
Barnali just seconded, but she was on mute. All right, we have a motion to approve agenda item eight E. Um, canceling the schedule, the scheduled board meeting for December that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty? Ah, yes, I did not. Are you? Oh, there's.
Yes.
There you go.
Oh, yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the cancellation of the scheduled board meeting for December. Okay, we're now on to agenda item eight F, the general library services personnel, collection, management, and finance policy updates. Julie, do you want to just give us the background on this agenda item?
Yes, um, so in twenty twenty, we were supposed to start on a calendar of doing all of the um various policies like one a month, and that didn't happen because for a while we weren't having meetings and then we could do essential business only, yada, yada. It was time to redo these policies um to review them uh since we had rewritten the policy manual in twenty eighteen. So we went ahead and did it as one big project. The uh management team has taken a look at it. Caitlin has done considerable work on this, um particularly in consistency and formatting. A lot of the consistency issues are things like whether library is capitalized, making sure it always says Board of Library Trustees, not Board of Library Board of Trustees and and things of that nature. You know, always referring to employees or staff, not library staff, always staff. And then gender neutral pronouns um and using child instead of son or daughter, things of that nature. So trying to get into that. For spaces like in the Village of Downers Grove always refers to medical, dental, and vision insurance. Our policy talked about health, dental, and vision insurance, so making all those sorts of changes. There are three sets of new sections here. One is just incorporating the compensation policy that the board approved in October of twenty nineteen, actually incorporating that into the personnel policy. We added a telecommuting session section also in the personnel policy, and then the security camera section in the general policy. So those are the only new pieces, and compensation policy is actually not new. It's just in a new spot. And uh overall, the only other substantive change is making the family medical leave and general leave policies agree. And that is on um the family medical leave policy did not have that uh you don't accrue additional time off if you're on an unpaid leave. And so making that consistent between the two policies. Other than that, it's Shane, it's rewording a little here, moving a sentence there.
Does anybody have any questions or comments in the? I I I review this more of like spot checking a little bit, just kind of going through, but I also am noting that we went through this in August of twenty eighteen essentially, and I think that was a more be comprehensive, and then this is more of tidying things up. You know, as you, as Julie's mentioned, so. I'm, I mean, subject to everyone else's thoughts. I'm actually okay. I talked to Julie a little bit, little bit about this. If if anyone wanted more time to review this a little bit more closely, we could push this to the January meeting. Or if we want to approve it this evening, I think that's, I I I I'm completely fine with either of those two approaches.
Absolutely.
So I'll just say, I I actually I managed to read the whole thing, a couple sittings, and I Caitlin, I have to say you did a great job of consistency thing as an editor from way back. That stuff bothers me so much. It was great. I mean, I it was, it was very refreshing to kind of be like, oh, this is all like about it anymore. This is terrific. So great job.
Thank you.
And in in such a long format. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Well, if it works for Chris, it works for me.
I'd like to echo that. I didn't read it quite all the way through, kind of like Jonathan said, I spot checked it, but. Everything looks so great. I ended up look just looking for pronouns and make sure I didn't see any his, her, or uh stuff like that left in, and you you got it all. So thank you.
Hey, do we have any other comments? Otherwise, do we have a motion to approve agenda item eight F? The general library services personnel, collection, management, and finance policy updates? Okay, I think Chris has said so moved, but it didn't quite come through.
Yes.
There you go.
Do that.
Second.
Have a second. Okay, we have a second. Um, we have a motion to approve agenda item eight F that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item eight F. We're now on to agenda item eight G, the DEI project phase one proposal from RGW Consulting. Do you have any questions or comments regarding the proposal? And and Julie, just if you could maybe lead this off with just kind of where like where things kind of go from here, kind of the the same question I was asking of Dan and Jason. It's like we're we're at where we're at.
Yeah.
There are proposals in the 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 prior um, you know, report that that we've received, and then we have kind of how do we move forward? And and how does this proposal kind of get us to do that?
So overall, it's a full, it's kind of a full year project. One of the first things that would happen is the staff training portion, because we would do that for our in-service day in January. Those two, three hour sessions that she is proposing would be the morning and afternoon sessions for our in-service day for all staff. That was already scheduled to happen, so um we will be doing that uh online, of course, this year. And so we're we're prepared to do that. There would also be trainings for the leadership teams, so the entire management team would go through those trainings, and there are um two board sessions as well. And so those would be scheduled at your convenience. But again, all of the trainings will be online. Um, kind of the the first step kind of library wide, other than beyond that first, we're going to get everybody through the training, will be to set up our equity advisory team, and Rashida will take the lead on that process. Doing some interviews, talking to staff. She also um was making notes during our listening sessions about who might be appropriate to have in uh some of those positions, as well as being able to put out a call for volunteers. Um, and then helping us put together a team that makes sense uh with representation from community, from board, from the leadership team, and from the staff in general, then that group would work with her and together uh to create a DEI strategic plan for the library, and that strategic plan would then inform what we were doing from twenty twenty two onward. The the whole process, um it it will take us the better part of the year. Once that DEI strategic plan is in place, then we would build, we would start on a regular strategic planning process. So we would kind of put that strategic planning process off a little bit to get through this piece, and then start with the DEI strategic plan and build the rest of our our larger strategic plan around it. So that would be a separate process. The Oak Park Public Library, it did their phase one um during twenty twenty. They had originally planned all sorts of in-person things, just like we had with the listening sessions, had to pivot and really found that the process worked in the online format as well. You know, the the longer we are all into this, the more used to it we are and able to work effectively. At this point, I really highly recommend that we continue. I don't want to lose our momentum on our diversity, equity, and inclusion projects. I would, we need to keep that momentum going, and so I really would like to just jump into the next phase of this of of this project.
And Julie, I'm glad you addressed that point about the um doing this online because you know, it's it's I I I sort of wanted it to be like the in-person, like to do this when we could do it in person, but there's also, I guess, the the um the idea that maybe if, I mean, depending on when she gets started, I think maybe this starts in January. Hopefully, we aren't still kind of in the situation we're in, but if we are, maybe it provides additional maybe time for the staff to kind of be begin working through this process.
Exactly. And and again, we don't want to lose this momentum. We're making good progress internally, and we want to continue to do that and to continue to address these issues. And and make sure that that we are being, that that we are living the vision of the library as an equitable and inclusive institution, and we're falling short now. We need to make those changes.
Yeah, I I obviously a hundred percent beyond this, and I don't want to lose a month, much less six months or however long the pandemic lasts. I think it can be done effectively online. We've pretty much learned how to do almost everything else online. I think we can do this. And I think there is a, there is a momentum, there is an ex if I dare use the word excitement a little bit on the part of many people anyway, to make this happen. And I would really like to see the library complete this in the community and become a model for what other organizations in the community can do. And so uh I'm all for charging ahead.
I just have one financial question from those listening sessions. I don't recall if we've already paid her for those because I see the proposal, I see that we put in the budget, so that was something prior to the listening sessions. Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Before somebody else asks it, I'll ask it. The uh, does this fit into our budget?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, and um one of the, one of the bonuses is the fact that that it's taking the place of our in-service day is part of this now, and so, you know, that's a different part of the budget that we're not using for that.
And if I heard you right, the in-service day is going to be almost exclusively this.
Yep, yes, it will.
That's outstanding. The right thing at the right time, I think.
Exactly.
Although, and I and I and I'm always concerned about the budget, but I mean, Julie, I have been working together for four years. It's consistently coming under budget. This is something that, you know, you're there day to day with the library, you know, to to see kind of what's needed, and so I really trust your judgment on on this. Do we have uh other questions or comments?
I was just gonna say, I um I love the idea of it being um on the in-service day. I feel like it really just allows all of the staff to really just connect and and disconnect from other pending duties and just have them focus on it all at once.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the DEI project phase one proposal from RGW Consulting?
So moved.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Hey, congratulations. We have a motion to approve agenda item eight G, the DEI project phase one proposal from RGW Consulting that has been seconded. Um, Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the DEI project phase one proposal from RGW Consulting, and we're now on to agenda item number nine, which is the COVID response and phased reopening plan. And I was just looking for the exact wording. But I think what we're looking for here is a motion to author reauthorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and with the within the parameters of the COVID nineteen response and reopening phasing plan as presented, which we've been doing now for seven months or so, but.
Yeah.
Just a really quick question. If we don't have our December board meeting, do we need to make it clear that this will then be extended through December and into January?
That would be great. And and I'm also just want to make sure that that we have nodding heads, that everybody's with me on um for continuing curbside service. As a government body, the library board it defines what essential services are, and so government entities can continue their essential services during um shutdowns, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that that you're all good with us continuing curbside as our essential service at this point. I really feel like we can do it safely, so I just wanted for the record to make that uh very explicit.
Yeah, the only reason I wouldn't like want to do it is because if the staff didn't want to do it, and if they're solidly behind it, I think it's a great service.
Right, if and then I think and I think we all agree if things change, you know, this is what we're authorized, I mean, is that for you to be flexible within, you know, to see how things kind of play out, and maybe things are kind of trending in the wrong direction at the moment, but.
Well, I've already heard some people in the community say this is one of the one of the casualties of people not paying attention to the uh necessary ways we can curb this virus, and they really hate to see the library close, and they can't wait till the library can reopen. But it's the right thing to do. I haven't heard anybody complain. They, I mean, they're sad, but they're not complaining, so.
Right.
And and I assume if the numbers go up, part of the discretion of the library director will be to reopen.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve agenda item nine A? Through, and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Through the January meeting, through the.
Through to January. Um, I have a motion to approve agenda item nine A through January.
All right, thanks, Bernali.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item nine A to extend uh Julie's ability to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within the parameters of the COVID nineteen response and reopening phasing plan through the January board meeting. That has been seconded, that has been moved and been seconded. Um, Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item 9A. We're now on to agenda item number 10, a library director's report. Julie?
I just want to highlight two items. One is in my written report, and the other is from our statistics. First and foremost, circulation clerk Emily Kiang has been appointed to the Rails EDI Committee. This is a brand-new committee for our regional library system, and we are very, very excited to have Emily be appointed to this role. She stepped up and wanted to apply. We had several staff members actually apply to be part of that committee. And only only 14 people were appointed, and Emily was one of them, so looking forward to her participation. And then just to point out, in our October circulation, we actually got to 95% of last year's October circulation. I know, even though our gate count is only 45% of last October's
Whoa.
gate count. So people have been, people are coming in and taking stacks of books, is really what it comes down to, or downloading stacks of books, so.
I was gonna say, I feel like my family is personally responsible for at least a couple percent of hair.
Could be.
Julie, how did it go on the weekend? You know, I remember back in March when the announcement was made, and the, you know, it was like locusts hit the first floor. Did that happen this weekend, and what did it look like when you closed on Friday or Sunday?
Well, we did hit capacity over the weekend, so they did actually have people waiting in a queue outside the library, so that as people left, we let a few more in. And that was the first time since we reopened to the public that that happened. It was not quite as bad as the locusts. The lobby, the lobby wasn't quite as devastated. But I think we can really attribute that to letting people know that curbside was going to continue and that they could continue to get items rather than the hard shutdown with no reopen date. But yeah, it was pretty crazy.
Our school librarian sent a note to everyone at our elementary school saying, hey, if you didn't see this, go to the library this weekend. She was very concerned about the reading of our elementary schools.
That's a good teacher.
Yeah.
Thankfully, when I showed up to the library, there wasn't a line, so, but it was, it was busy. But I was able to, you know, roam around a little bit, so it was nice.
Yeah, and I just also want to highlight that we have brought back the curated book bundles option. So on the curbside page, there is a link to the form. So if you're one of those people who prefers to browse and are very sad because you can't browse, a librarian will curate a bundle for you to give you more of that browsing experience.
One other quick question. I forgot to look this up. Is interlibrary loan continuing, or is that?
Yes, it is.
Excellent.
Yes, it is. Delivery is continuing, interlibrary loan is continuing, so we are also, just as an FYI, offering the curbside pickup to anyone who cares to pick up their items at the Downers Grove Library. It is not limited to residents only, so for any of our folks who actually live in another community but choose to use Downers Grove, especially our fellow Swan libraries, they are still able to do that.
That's neighborly.
Okay, thank you, Julie. So I think at this moment, we need a motion to move into executive session. And if I'm able to pull this off as the host, that will be, you know, monumental thing.
We did practice. We practiced. There's Ed, he's gonna take us through this.
I guess I'll get us started.
Well, first, we need the motion and the second and the roll call.
Let's do a motion first.
You want a motion?
Yeah, motion to move into executive session.
Okay, I move that we move into executive session for discussion of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee.
I second all of that. Good job.
Okay, we have a motion to move into executive session, asset forth on agenda item 11A that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. All right, Ed, you're you're now on the clock. We talked about a lot of things, obviously, in the executive session. But just for the purposes of moving this meeting along and to a conclusion, I have a motion to approve a, this is in addition to Julie's 1.9% cost of living increase, a motion to approve a one and a half percent merit increase beginning on January 1st of 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a one and a half percent merit increase to Julie's salary beginning January 1st, 2021, that has been seconded. Caitlin, could you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you, Julie.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the board. I really appreciate it.
We all thank you.
We're now on to agenda item number 13, trustee comments and requests for information. Does anybody have any trustee comments or requests for information? Julie, I'll just make one comment. I'm going to be in touch with you about just some procedural matters. You know, after, you know, but we can, we'll talk about that later.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank all of the milestone recipients or recognition one more time for their service, especially those that are retired. And just thanks, a general thanks to the staff for just constantly pivoting. I know, even just in my own little bubble, switching and adapting is painful and stressful and anxiety inducing, so I can't imagine being part of a, you know, a public entity. So I just appreciate all of you for doing that.
Amen.
And I will be sure to share that with the whole staff.
Okay, any additional trustee comments or requests for information? All right, thank you, everyone, for staying up with us this evening. We're now on to agenda item number 14, which is the adjournment, so I will adjourn the meeting. See you in a couple months.
Thanks, guys. See you in January.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Bye, guys.
You're not that lucky. We'll see each other before then.